Now, if you'll remain standing, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the honor of having a Boy Scout troop here with us today, and they're going to lead us in the pledge. Why don't you guys step forward up here?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. This is part of their merit badge program that they're applying for. We've got a couple. One person that's -- we're going to -- is Eagle Scout. A couple that are working for their star, which is, I think it's too below Eagle. So, and a couple other ones working on other badges. So, part of the process is they're going to see how we run the city here. Hopefully, we do a good job. Before we get moving, I'm just going to announce right now that item number three on the consent calendar is going to be -- well, we're going to pull it, we're going to put it in under new business, so that will not be part of the consent calendar today. Okay, presentations elsewhere. Do we have Frances Lemon in the audience? Frances, would you step forward? I had the honor on Monday, November 23rd, to present a certificate of recognition to the Lompoc Unified School District on the opening of our compressed natural gas refueling system. And Frances, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, I just wanted to come and extend my major thank you to the city for helping us with such things as easements, sequels, just helping us through the whole process of getting the right permits and stuff that we needed to, and working with us on getting the new station, and bringing compressed natural gas to the public for the city of Lompoc. So, when people travel through the central coast, they can bring cleaner burning vehicles that have reduced NOx greenhouse gases, so they're not polluting our beautiful coastline. And now that I have this great station, I'm buying more and more, or not buying, I'm actually getting more and more buses on grants. So, I've got 15 compressed natural gas buses that I'm running every day, which is saving the district huge amounts of money. So, more money's going back to the kids of the district. So, I'm here on behalf of the district. I just wanted to thank the city council, the mayor, everybody that helped us through the process, and we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, and we appreciate everything you do as well.
Thank you.
City manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick item to announce is that our recreation division administrative offices have temporarily relocated from the Anderson Recreational Center to the Dick Dewey's Community Center. I think it's about a month that we're going to be relocated while we do some improvements to the Anderson Rec Center. So, looking forward to the improvements that are being made there, and in the meantime, anyone that has some business to do with the recreational division should head to the Dewey's Center for that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on now to public comment on the consent calendar. As you know, item number three has been pulled, so if you want to have any comment, if you have any comment on anything on the consent calendar, now's your opportunity to step forward. You'll have up to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, on item number four, I just want to point out, we had a typo that I wanted to correct into the record, that the title for number four reads correct in the amount of $297,171. In the description down below, it reads a different amount at $291,171. The title amount is the correct amount.
So, the $297,171 is correct?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone from public who have any comments? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Any council member wish to pull an item? Okay, seeing no one. I need -- now, this is, I need a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of number three and the correction to number four.
That's my motion.
Okay, it's motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, that brings us to staff presentations. Ms. Breeze.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the community. I would like to take this opportunity this evening to introduce you to our new principal planner, Stephanie Edmondson. She just joined us a week ago, so she is getting used to being here, but she has a bachelor's degree in environmental studies from UCSB and a master's degree in public administration from Cal State Northridge. She also has her AICP, which is her certified planner designation. And she, when she was at UCSB, an internship is required, and she actually did her internship here in the city of Lompoc a few years ago, and has now returned back to us as a city employee with the city, enjoying being back here after having worked in Carpinteria, and Santa Barbara, Malibu, and most recently, in Moore Park. So, she's been on the central coast and is happy to be back with us, and we're happy to have her. As you know, we're always needing good planners, and having people with the breadth of experience that Stephanie has is going to be a great addition to our staff. So, you'll be seeing her as our projects come forward to her, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce her.
Thank you.
Stephanie, did you say anything?
It's a pleasure to be back here at the city of Lompoc, and I'm looking forward to working with the council as well as the planning commission and serving the citizens of Lompoc. Thank you.
Welcome, and you hope you realize how appreciative we are to have you here because we've got a lot of work for you to do now.
Well.
Yes?
I go along with that. I already talked to an individual who had some plans through the city, was very impressed with our new planner, so I want to congratulate you on that. And he brought it up. I didn't bring it up, so that's what's nice about it.
All right. Okay, oral communications. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item you choose. If the item you want to speak about is on the agenda, unless you must leave, please hold it for that item. So, anyone want to speak to us?
Honorable Mayor and city councilman, audience, my name is Don Buck. I'm a long-term resident here of the city of Lompoc. At the last city council meeting, the California Space Center was put to a vote and canceled. And I'm here on behalf of mostly the others, if you would, and myself, that concern citizens within the city of Lompoc that would like to see a reconsideration of that project. We feel that collectively, the denial, if you would, or the shutdown of that project, that that particular motion, there are other motions that could have been made that would have continued the project and kept it on scope. We really want to see Lompoc grow and prosper from the proposed project. The monies that would have brought into town for taxes, for our community shopping and housing, and everything you know from international tourism, not only affects Lompoc, but it affects the entire central coast. And all of the cities from Santa Barbara to San Luis Obispo would have prospered from the money that would have been brought into the city of Lompoc. Lompoc is in a unique position because of our launch visibility and the proximity to the base. We're unique. There's no better place to put that center. If we don't do something, and we don't do something positively and quickly, we're going to lose it, period. We've already, for the most part, lost it. I've been in contact with Ava Blaisdell, and I'm trying to get a read back from her as to whether or not, if the city were to reconsider and reapproach the situation, if she and her organization would like, you know, would like to do the same thing. And she's in Europe right now, so we'll be in contact in the next day or so. But I'd really, really like you to reconsider that. I've got a document, part of it of which I've written, the rest of it are from Facebook pages. There's three of them. One of those is Ava Blaisdell's, that you've got a community of about 300-plus people out there that are very concerned about the loss of this particular project. And we all feel that there was a better route to be taken, a better route to be chosen, and we're very, very disappointed that that didn't happen. We also would like to thank those council members, our mayor, who, I didn't see who voted for what, but that went along with the project, and we very, very much support, appreciate that support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens of Lompoc, we're back here trying to bring tourism back.
Mr. Ross, would you give your, state your name?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike Ross. I'm speaking for my mother who ran the Lompoc Swap Meet. She's here tonight.
Mike, one more thing. Can you address the council, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I was looking at all the -- okay, so what we're trying to do is bring the tourism back, which one of the biggest attractions we had in this town was the Lompoc Swap Meet. And we had 75 families that were small business. Now, they've lost their jobs, and we'd like to bring jobs back, we'd like to bring tourism back, and we'd like to rebuild Lompoc. A lot of people have called us, churches are calling me, and we, I tell them, I don't know. I'm trying the best that I can. Everything that we've tried to do, they have come back and said something else. We had it set up with a college, and then the next thing you know, they go, oh, we got word that we want $4,000 a Saturday. We never even come close to making that just bringing in the regular income. But we need to bring back tourism and put these families back to work. I have several of them that are in the audience that needs your help. So, we are asking to have it considered. And I'm open for any questions. Old town is dying. We would love to be back in that area, bring back the business, and think about it. And if we can, we're willing, we're able. It'll take us a long time. We've lost so many people. But we would love to bring back the swap meet and bring back tourism and jobs into this town. So, on behalf of all these people that are sitting out there in the audience, they're here asking for your help, too. And we have lost a lot of families. We contacted almost all of our people, and they said, said, "We can't afford to live there. We don't, we can't make any money." So, we're going to try, and if we can have any input from the city council, all we need to do is take the old contract, and we can discuss what the price could be, and rewrite it, because we have all the laws. We make sure everybody has their permits. That's why I've been here taking care of my mom, so she could run the swap meet. And my job was to make sure that everybody had their license, which they did. So, I'm asking for your consideration, and I'm almost out of time, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and please, Mayor, you have my number.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, eh, 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 we don't, okay, no, no, go ahead, go ahead, sit on the other. Just in the council meetings, we don't boo, we don't applaud, we just run a meeting, okay? Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment and bring it back. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is appointments. We have one opening on the library board of trustees, and that's not actually correct. It's a library commission now. Is that correct? It states the library board of trustees, but it's now --
On mine, it says library commission.
Okay, okay. Ours is, okay, so it should be the library commission. Okay, that's okay. Okay, one, we have one opening on the library commission, and we have one applicant. It's Ms. Molly Gerald. And I don't know if we have anyone that wants to make a motion?
Yeah. I move that Molly Gerald be appointed to the library commission.
Second.
Okay, second, okay. Now, for those of you that don't know Molly, Ms. Gerald was the library director here for many years, so I think she more than qualifies to serve on the commission, so. Any other discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Is Molly in the audience? No? Okay. So, congratulations, Molly. You're back with the library. Okay, we're going to move on to new business, and we're going to take item number three first, which is the, which is the one that we pulled from the consent calendar. So, let's go to item number three. And I believe Mr. City Attorney, that is, you're going to handle this?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. As you recall, in September, September 15th, actually, I was directed to report out that the council had directed its labor negoti, its real estate negotiator to issue a notice of default to the California Space Center group due to defaults in the, or alleged defaults in the exclusive negotiation agreement. That was done, and a citizen submitted a letter to the city indicating that she felt that the action that the council had taken was a violation of the Brown Act. We met in closed session to discuss that allegation, and again, there was direction that was given to take a certain approach, and the approach that was taken was I sent a letter to the person who was complaining and indicated that the council was willing to issue a statement saying they wouldn't ever have a closed session and determine a notice of default for that exclusive negotiation agreement. Again, out of, in a closed session, they would only do that in public. That letter was sent, and the person who had sent the original letter sent another letter saying that letter didn't meet the requirements of the Brown Act whereby the Brown Act allows an opportunity for the council, when litigation is threatened, to take certain actions so that if litigation is taken, after those actions are taken, the council can ask the court to dismiss the lawsuit because of the actions the council took. The letter that I had sent didn't follow all the procedures of that, because we weren't intending on using that provision. We just wanted to avoid having to discuss the matter further. But based on that letter, I decided that we should just place it on the public agenda and have the council decide whether or not they wanted to take all the benefits of the Brown Act that allows for protection from lawsuits. And to do that, I've also suggested there's three possible letters that, and we have to send something in writing back to the person who complained in order to meet the Brown Act requirements. And there's three alternate letters that I have proposed. One of the letters is the one that I originally had suggested, maybe a little rewording, that basically says that the council won't take any action on notices of default in closed session. Now, I also understand that due to the fact that the exclusive negotiation agreement is now moot because it's been terminated, so the concept is really a little odd, but because the Brown Act is a procedural matter, it would, at least my recommendation would be to follow the provisions of the Brown Act that would give you the protection from lawsuits. The second alternative is to try to meet a compromise, I guess, between the city and the person who complained, because the person who complained didn't think that the letter and the commitment was broad enough, and so she wanted to have something broader. But the language she was proposing, I think, doesn't, it isn't self-executing, and there would be lots of questions. And I think fundamentally, there's a difference between what the complaining person believes that the Brown Act requires and what I and many city attorneys feel that the Brown Act allows. And so, because of that, the second alternative I was suggesting is that the council take an affirmative act and say that they won't meet in closed session at all regarding the CSC project unless it's for litigation. That is easily understood, and no one would be concerned about having to discuss what that meant. I'm not saying legally you have to do that, but I don't have legal objection if you wanted to do that. The third alternative is to issue a letter that basically says exactly what the complaining person wanted the letter to say. I have two concerns with that. One is, again, that because of the nature of how that person believes the Brown Act applies to closed sessions for real property negotiations, that I think we may end up in dispute. Again, it's a little difficult to be talking about, because the dispute would arise if it was out of the CSC ENA, which is now terminated. But there's a possibility that the California Space Center group could continue to want to do something on that site, and if they want to do something on that site, you could discuss it in closed session, because it would reveal property that the city is involved, that the project is involved with. The other thing that the person wanted to add was that you wouldn't ever discuss a Brown Act, an alleged Brown Act violation in closed session. And I do have a tremendous legal concern of doing that, because you have the absolute right to go into closed session to discuss threatened litigation. And I would strongly suggest that you not approve that third letter. You have the legal authority to do that if you want, but I wouldn't recommend that third alternative. So, in summary, I would just suggest that you take the, have a full discussion, have public input, listen to what public has to say, and if you want to take an action to take the benefit of the Brown Act protection from litigation, I would recommend alternative one.
Any questions for Mr. Panoni? Okay, seeing no questions from the council, we're going to go to public comment. Your opportunity to speak to us concerning item number three. You have three minutes.
Gentlemen, I've read the city, ah, Jane Bear, and thank you for removing it from the consent calendar. I appreciate that. I've read the city attorney's recommendations regarding this item, and I question the quality of advice that you are receiving from Mr. Panoni. I am up here telling you this not because I am your enemy, but because I want to be your friend and because I want the city to run right. There are several points that require discussion. First, I would like to clarify the boundaries of the real property exception, because regardless of the city attorney's opinion on this matter, the state attorney general's opinion is quite clear, and it is this opinion that convinces me that your September 15th closed session meeting was a violation of the Brown Act. And I have that opinion with me if you would like to see it. Second, I would like to discuss the letter Mr. Panoni sent me on November 4th, because it seems intentionally misleading, and I would like for you to reassure me of your good intentions. Third, I would like to show you that none of the three alternative letters drafted by the city attorney follow the form of Section 59560.2C1 of the Brown Act. Fourth, I would like to discuss with you why the city attorney is so determined to redefine the past action that I am asking you to cease and desist from. It is not the making of a decision to send a notice of default. It is the meeting in closed session, and I would like to discuss that with you further. Fifth, and finally, I would like to warn you that when the city attorney suggests that you could at some point meet privately with the CSC, he is recommending something that is clearly unlawful, and he does that when he's discussing alternative two. It is in the city's best interests to hear me on these points, and I am prepared to be concise, but I cannot address all five of these points in three minutes. So, I ask for your guidance at this point.
Ms. Bear, how much time would you require to?
How about eight?
Can you get it done in three more minutes? We'll give you a --
I can make a couple of points in three minutes.
Go ahead. Give her three more minutes.
Okay. First point, I'd like to share what I've learned about the real property exception of the Brown Act. This is important, because Mayor Lingel, you were quoted in the Lompoc record saying, "We always discuss property in closed session." You all, you also sent me an email to that, to that extent, that you always discuss property in closed session. But if you actually read the real property exception, you'll see that it doesn't cover all discussions about real estate. The exception allows the council to meet in closed session only to grant authority to its negotiator regarding the price and terms of payment on the transfer of property. The city attorney maintains it was appropriate for the council to meet in closed session regarding the CSC on September 15th, because he is applying a very broad definition of price and terms of payment. However, the state district attorney clearly disagrees with Mr. Panoni. This, that I have just handed out to you, is opinion number 10206, which is published by the office of the district attorney. I would direct your attention in particular to the summary that is highlighted on page 10 of the document that I just handed to you. Can you see the highlighted part there on page 10? It says, "We cannot accept the view that the real estate negotiations exception permits the closed session discussion of any and all aspects of a proposed transaction that might have some effect on price and payment terms. The purpose of the exception is to protect a local agency's bargaining position, not to keep confidential its deliberations as to the wisdom of a proposed transaction." When you met in closed session on September 15th and decided to issue a notice of default to the CSC, you were not discussing either price or payment terms, and you weren't trying to protect your bargaining position. Therefore, and contrary to what the city attorney would have you believe, your discussion did not meet the exception's requirements, and as I have written, you violated the Brown Act. And that is my first point, and I'm now out of time. I have four more.
Okay. Okay, I think we're going to move on, though. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Bear. Anyone else?
I'm Sue Copeland, mayor, city council. I'm disappointed with the not hearing, you're not hearing her out fully. Unfortunately, the way that it was presented, or some of the things Mr. Panoni was saying was, you know, a single person, yes, a single person did send out the letter, but she is not the only person who is concerned. There are a lot of us that were very distressed with the way that the situation was handled, with the ENA in closed sessions being canceled, or the notice of default, I'm sorry, the notice of default being issued. I truly believe that should have been in open session, so that there could have been discussion as to what was meant and what wasn't meant. I was here that night, and all that Ava Blaisdell was told at that time was that we'll send you a letter tomorrow, letting you know why. And so, the public was ignorant about the situation, as was the newspaper and the hundreds of people that were here watching the promotions of our fire department personnel. So, it was a very frustrating thing to watch and to hear, and I ask that you really address this. And I ask that you really address this issue and really consider what you do in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Bear, Lompoc resident. Council members, city staff, citizens of Lompoc. Because you would not give Jane any more time, I am speaking to her fourth point on her behalf here. In my October 6 letter, I ask you to cease, desist from, and not repeat the past action. Let's talk about the past action. I define the past action as, quote, "using closed sessions to discuss the California Space Center project or ENA, except in very narrow and specific instances when the council's purpose is, quote, 'to grant authority to its negotiator regarding the price and terms of payment, as is allowed by law.'" The city attorney persists in redefining the past action as, quote, "issuing the notice of default." He did it in the unlawful unconditional commitment letter of November 4th and three times in this memo to you this evening. Let me be clear. It is the closed session meeting in and of itself that violated the Brown Act, completely separate from any action that was taken in that meeting or whether or not that action was reportable as defined by the Brown Act. The Brown Act defines a meeting as, quote, "any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate upon any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body or the local agency to which it pertains." Ordinarily, a meeting involves some sort of action taken by the public body, resolutions passed, decisions made, et cetera. But the term "meeting" applies to deliberations and information gathering or fact-finding sessions as well. These definitions of meeting are broad and include any gathering of a majority of members in order to discuss and carry out the body's public business. So let me emphasize again. The point is not that you made the decision to send the notice of default. The point is that you met in a closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Next, please.
Denny Overton, Lompoc resident. My first point is that I found it offensive that our city attorney just says the person complaining. She made a complaint regarding a violation. She wasn't just complaining. And I think that you should all hear her points out. But my main point is that I am very disappointed that those of you that I did support in the election seem to not have been transparent and also that you voted to end the ENA agreement due to rules over the best interest of our city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Overton, Lompoc resident. Mr. Mayor, council members. Everybody else? I'd like to pose a question. Have all of the council members received a copy of the Brown Act? And is that copy up to date, including the amendments that were approved in 2013? I ask because on the city's website, there is a link to an older version of the Brown Act, which is not current. It was in 2013 that the Brown Act was amended to add direction regarding the type of cease and desist letter that you received from Jane. So if you didn't have the most recent copy of the Brown Act, it's possible that you have never even heard of this option and didn't know how to appropriately respond to it. The city attorney claims that you did not violate the Brown Act a second time by meeting in a closed session about the first Brown Act violation because you met using the anticipated litigation exception. But you apparently decided during that closed session to send an unconditional commitment response. Now, when the city attorney advised you, did he explain to you that the decision to send an unconditional commitment response had to be made in open session, and the letter had to be signed by the mayor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next? Okay, Ms. Bear, I'm going to ask you to come up and just finish your points. I know you had your husband do one, but finish.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, I am prepared to be concise. The letter, the letter that you sent on, I know it happened in closed session. So I really want to know. You can't tell me. I understand. But did you know that the unconditional commitment letter had to be signed by the mayor? Did you know that it had to be discussed in open session? Because then Mr. Panoni says, "Oh, well, I wasn't taking advantage of all of the Section 59.560.2 requirements." But look at his letter. He followed it exactly, word for word. So he absolutely was representing that letter as an unconditional commitment to me. And it was only because I read it really closely and because I was more familiar with the Brown Act than any of you are that I knew what he was trying to do. He's trying to redefine the past action. I don't think, I don't think that he will admit that meeting in closed session was a bad idea. And honestly, the cease and desist letter protects you from litigation, and you don't even have to admit that you violated the Brown Act. But all you have to do is say, "I won't do it again." And that's what I want you to do. His letters, now that he's offered three alternatives, he didn't follow the form. The first time, on November 4th, he followed it word for word. And now he offers you three alternatives that add extra verbiage. Why is that? I don't understand. And he persists in saying, "The action that I am complaining about is the notice of default and the issuing thereof." It's not. It's the fact that you met. He brings up a couple of good points about litigation. So I have, I have written the letter that you should write me. And I don't expect you to be able to make a decision tonight. Do whatever you think is right. But the two points that he made were regarding litigation, and they were good ones. If, and so I changed the first past action to using the real property exception of the Brown Act to justify a closed session to discuss the California Space Center project or the ENA, except in very narrow and specific instances when the council's purpose is to grant authority to its negotiator regarding the price and terms of payment. So that does not preclude you from meeting in closed session if the California Space Center sues you or if you want to talk about litigation having to do with the California Space Center. The second one, he's right. You're not required to meet in open session if you suspect that somebody is going to sue you. But your first impulse, when somebody brings a Brown Act violation to your attention, should not be, "Oh, my God, I'm getting sued." It should be, "Wow, what did we do? And why is the public questioning us? And let's talk it out." And that's why I so appreciate that you have given me a little extra time here because that's what's required. We need to talk it out. And so, but, but that does open you up. If somebody actually takes you to court and tries to litigate a Brown Act violation, you should be able to meet in closed session with your attorney. So I changed it to using closed sessions to discuss and approve actions related to alleged Brown Act violations, except if litigation is initiated formally. Now, how you met the first time was because you could say you suspected that litigation might possibly occur. And certainly, it is my right to go and hire a lawyer. I don't want to do that because, remember, I'm not your enemy. I'm just trying to make things run right. I'm just trying to get you to be transparent, which you all said you wanted to do, although you did manage to take that off your list of priorities in February. So I'll pass out this letter to you, and then I'm at your disposal to answer further questions. And I hope that you make a decision that's based on what you know instead of what the city council or what your attorney is recommending to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any questions, comments from the council? Okay. If there's no questions or comments, I would like to entertain a motion. Speak in your microphone.
I'd like to see any response from a city attorney on any of the comments. I think at least it's got to be that time before we make any decision.
Not wanting to get into a back and forth with Ms. Bear or anyone else. I do acknowledge that we disagree on what the Brown Act requires. It's not as clear as is being suggested, and it's not as limiting as being suggested. But again, that's only going to add to more consternation that people believing that I'm wrong and the other person's right. So I don't see much purpose in trying to continue that discussion. One of the alternatives that I had suggested, the third one that I'm not recommending, but had suggested, was basically committing to do what it is that she specifically wanted you to do. So I'm not really sure what that concern is all about. If that, I mean, that letter is one of the letters that I'm proposing. Again, I'm proposing it because it is a legal alternative you have, but it's not one I would recommend for the reasons I stated before. And I still would be concerned at using the, anything that appears to say that you are going to commit to the narrow interpretation that is being presented to you for real property negotiations because if you do that, you're going to limit yourself on a number of possibilities that come up over and over again, as you know.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I just want to make a couple of comments. One of the speakers, Mr. Bear, you had asked if we have copies of the Brown Act. And yes, in fact, we do. And the newer versions with the revisions, and then we do have. So, but thank you for that comment. You know, Ms. Bear, I appreciate your comments about transparency. And you're right, all of us have run on the platform of trying to be transparent. I believe we always strive to be transparent. Sometimes, in some people's opinion, we are not. Obviously, we didn't succeed in your, in your opinion. When I ran this last time, one of the things I ran on is that we as council members, we certainly are not experts in everything that happens in the city. As a matter of fact, we're probably not experts in anything that happens in the city. We are all intelligent people that care about our community, and we rely on the staff that we hire. There's only two people that the city council hires, and that is the city manager and the city attorney. And just like the city manager relies on the staff that they've hired, the city manager certainly doesn't understand, or he understands, he doesn't run the utilities. He relies on an expert to run the utilities. Saying that, I believe that we did hire two very good people for their positions, the city manager and the city attorney. For that reason, I rely on their expertise. And I'm going to make the motion that we authorize myself, the mayor, to sign a letter to Ms. Bear, and it is option number one that is in your packets. And that'll be my motion. With that, I need a second. And if I have no second, that motion will fail, and I'll look for an alternate motion. Councilmember Humdol.
You pulled out it too soon. I'll go ahead and second your motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, because you withdrew the motion, I would suggest you remake the motion.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you. Okay. So I'm going to remake my motion. My motion is to authorize me, the mayor, to sign letter number one to Ms. Bear. It's option number one, addressed to Ms. Bear. That'll be my motion.
I will be second your motion.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Starbuck, you ready to push your button? Okay. No discussion, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Ms. Bear, I grant, I want to thank you for your involvement in this. People like you that get involved in the community, it is helpful. Okay, so just because it isn't turning out the way you had hoped it would, I truly do appreciate your involvement in our community. So, thank you again. Okay, we're going to move on to item number, item number nine, which is authorization agreement, purchase property. And that will be Mr. Luther.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mike Luther, City Engineer. So I'm here tonight to get three staff recommendations. The first one is to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement attached to the staff report. The second one is to authorize the city manager in, to negotiate any terms in that draft agreement other than purchase price. I, actually, let me clarify that. Other than increasing the purchase price, that's authorized in the staff report. So if the price, for some reason, was negotiated down further, that would be okay. And then also to authorize the budget adjustment to fund the purchase. So here in the slide, I just wanted to recap on some of the past history. So back in June of 2013, council authorized the use of Proposition 1B funding to develop this new facility. Back in October of 2013, we authorized the purchase agreement of the former Wyrick lumberyard on D Street. And in April of this year, I'm sorry, April of last year, we issued a contract to begin a program analysis. And in March, that was presented to city council with alternatives. And Site Alternative 3 was selected by council in March. And Site Option 3 required additional property acquisition, which is why we're here tonight. So just going back a little bit further, why we are proposing the new facility is, this is a picture of the existing corporate yard. And so the fleet department is located in this area of the corporate yard. Transit is in this small building here with maintenance building in this building. So some of the constraints at the existing site are parking limitations. You can see here, this is what it looks like at night and partially during the day. That's the maintenance building for transit. You have vehicles blocking aisles. You have overflow of the existing service bays outside of fleet. You have stacking of vehicles in front of other bays that are run by other city departments. You have stacking of vehicles in front of other bays that are run by other city departments. You have vehicles that are too large to fit inside the existing service facility. And so, just to bring you back here, so this is the, what site option three looks like currently. So this is what was submitted to the planning department and presented, slightly laid out different than what was presented in March, but the basic same site layout. This facility will allow for the servicing of large cleaner express buses up in the proposed bays up here. It keeps this corner lot available for sale, lease, future expansion as directed by council. It provides access out to A Street. And I think I had a couple more, let's see. And then, and then so here's a picture of the property we're talking about tonight. It includes these six parcels up here along the top. So this is the purchase that was approved back in 2013. This is the additional property we're talking about, so it includes one, two, three, four, five, six parcels. So it includes three full parcels and partial of three additional parcels. So here are some things to consider is that this, this purchase acquisition right here will complete the property needed to complete the preferred site plan as approved by council. It will provide enough land and facilities to meet the transit and fleet needs for the next 20 years, and what the corner property could be expanded for the next 50-plus years. It enhances the opportunities for security at both facilities, the existing corporate yard and the new facility. And it will help improve operational efficiencies by keeping fleet and transit together. And that's what I had, let me back up here, so I'll leave it here. Available for any questions you might have.
Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, on that corner lot, you're thinking about leasing it out now, could you put a timeframe on that one lot, that you could lease it for five years, 10 years, or whatever, so that when you went out to lease it? I think it's a good idea to lease it, but I just wondered how, how we can put a timeline on that.
It hasn't been, nobody's approached. We haven't finished the plan, so it really hasn't been out in the public for anybody to show interest in the property. So terms and, that'd be something that would be up for discussion.
Well, I thought that was one of the properties that some of the wine industry is looking at to put a tasting room and such in there at one time. So I think that's why I'm saying that, as the industry moves that way, that may be something that can be used on a long-term, short-term basis or whatever.
It's definitely possible. I haven't been approached by anybody.
Right. I think right now, our approach is to be reactive rather than proactive on how we're using that corner piece. What we had heard from council was a desire to reserve that, and so, right now, we've got plenty of flexibility on how we might reserve it, and I think it really depends on what offer we may receive, if any, compared with what our own needs are at any time that would lead us to present and make recommendations to you.
Mr. Luther, there, you know, purchasing property, I, we didn't, I don't think we discussed the, where the money's coming from. It's in the staff report, but for the public. None of this money's coming out of our general fund. Could you let the public know where the money is coming from?
Yeah, so as previous, in our previous presentation, presentation back in March, we had talked in more depth about the funding options, but, so the purchase, the funding for the purchasing of the property is coming from Proposition 1B, which is transit measure that was passed by the California voters several years back. So that's what's being used here. But for the overall project, it would be financed through transit funds that we currently have, that we receive through the state, through TDA funds, and through the federal government, through FTA. Currently, we, we have a surplus of those funds that we receive of about a million dollars a year, which has been being programmed towards streets and roads. It would just be programmed towards transit.
Okay, so, and this has been our goal for a long time, to build up this fund. It wasn't that the money was just laying around, the money was being set aside for a project like this.
Well, the Prop 1B funds are specific, and they actually have an expiration date, so they're, they're use-it-or-lose-it type funds. So this is, this is the project that was originally, the funds were allocated to, and we're just, it just takes a long time to get to the point, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
Now, can you go a little more depth of the transit funds that are available and how, because obviously, we don't have $13 million sitting aside. We have some money available every year, and, you know, what your mechanism, your funding mechanism is? I know Mr. Wilkie in the past discussed this.
Well, I think I might defer to Mr. Wilkie.
Yeah, maybe you can, keep it on the tip of our tongue, I know it was a few months ago.
But, but basically, the city is programmed through the various transit sources by population. So Lompoc has allocated a, a funding source based on our population, just like Santa Maria's. Down in Santa Barbara County, it goes to MTD. So that's, that's kinda how it gets split up, just by population.
But again, are we gonna get the, the bulk, the bulk money that we're gonna need?
No, so we don't have $13 million on hand. We have about three and a half million, and we have an annual surplus of around a million dollars. So that would be used to pay down financing. So we do need some kind of financing source to initially pay for the construction.
And this was, in the past, we had mentioned that word?
Yeah, so this was in the previous staff report back in, back in March.
Where we mentioned the word bond or something, or we're gonna do, because that word.
Well, bond's one option, I mean, I think there's other financing options, but that was one.
Or a loan guaranteed with the payment of this. Do we still have that million dollars annually available?
Yes.
Okay, and that, how many years have we saved, in the past history, has that been coming, coming across, 20, 30 years, or, I mean, it looks pretty stable, right?
The, the funding source is, has been historically stable, yes.
For how many years approximately, you think? Maybe, roughly?
As long as I've been here. At least as long as I have been with the city, which is about seven years or so. And the money has been reprogrammed towards streets and roads, but the money is primarily for transit, so that we're suggesting that we redirect the money to transit for which the money is given to us in the first place. The, the reason why we want to consider financing of this is so that we can leverage the million dollars that we're getting on an annual basis to get the facility up and running and use those monies to pay off that in a fairly short amount of time. So it wouldn't be a, it, we're gonna leave our options open, but it, it likely could be something that's less than a 30-year bond or 30-year financing, which would save quite a lot of money on interest, so.
There's a little confusion with some of the, the monies that are out there, because you have the, the one fund that has 3.1 in there, that 800,000's gonna go for the, the center over here. And then we have, you know, it's split up, but there's also three and a half million that's in, available in another fund, right?
Well, the, we currently have allocated to us 3.1 million of Prop 1B monies. We haven't received all of that yet. We've received a vast majority of it, but you're right, some of us earmarked for the transit.
Transfer Center.
Center. That's gonna be down I Street area. And we've already spent some of the money to buy the parcel that's on the bottom left corner of the map up there. The money that we're spending on the three-plus parcels at the top is also gonna come from Prop 1B. And as Mike said, we have a deadline to spend that money of sometime in early 2017, so we wanna make sure that we utilize that to the best ability for the city as a whole. And during that time, we're still getting the, the TDA funds, which is a separate pot of money from the state through SB CAG for transit purposes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Does Prop 1B have a sunset on it?
Yes, it does. It's currently March of 2017 is when the funds are supposed to be expended. That could, that could possibly be extended, though. That's just the current date, because they haven't actually sold all the bonds yet.
What was that sunset date?
I believe it's March of 2017. Yeah, that's when you have to spend it, it has to be spent.
Oh, spent by, but I mean, the actual proposition itself, is it?
Well, it was just a bond, it was a bond measure that was approved, so they haven't actually sold all the bonds, so that's why we haven't received all the funding yet. So we just receive our portion of, every time they do a bond sale for it, we get our piece of it. So that's why I think we've, I don't know the exact number that we received to date. At one, at one point, it was 2.3 million, I think it's a little higher than that at this, right now.
You know, with unforeseen funds, maybe the availability won't be there in the future. Is this project gonna be set up where it could be done in phases, where we're not left hanging out, so to speak, and have to bond it?
It's not, it's not currently phased.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Luther? Okay, we're gonna open this up to the public, public comment. Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment real quick. I just, we're looking at several million dollars that we're counting on, but we don't have an ideal time of, we could possibly lose the money, in which case then, what would we have? So wouldn't it make sense that would, would work better for us to phase the project than to go ahead and go do it all at once? Or can it even be done in a phase?
Construction could possibly be phased, but currently, the, the need is to purchase the property, and that would just help expend the money that we need to spend. So, I mean, we, we don't even have an approved project through the planning. We're, we're just working through the development phase right now, through the planning process. But we do know to build the preferred project that council directed us to, we need to acquire the property.
And right now, we're only, the only thing we're working on tonight, discussing tonight, is the actual purchasing of that property. We're not discussing the build-out or anything else.
No, we're only talking about entering a purchase agreement.
Correct. So, so Councilmember Starbucks concerns, once the property is purchased, those could come back at a future date, so.
Yeah, so the, the other funding, TDA, doesn't really have an expiration date, so the excess, we can build up that, that reserve over time, but the FTA funding, it does, it has like a three-year lifespan, so we have to keep, we have to watch when we spend that money a little more closely.
Okay, any other discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve as written here.
Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? No discussion, let's vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, written communications. All communications, this is your last opportunity to speak to the council concerning anything.
I'm Benjamin Kiblinger, you know, Lompoc resident, and I'm here today on behalf of the, you know, California Space Center and also on behalf of the city of Lompoc. Yeah, I've been speaking to, you know, both, you know, parties about the possibility of there being, you know, a new agreement, you know, because, you know, the people of Lompoc want to see a California Space Center. And, you know, the poll that the Lompoc Record did after the vote on, you know, November 17th was really quite ingenious, because they did something that, you know, the council members didn't get to do, which is they enabled our population to respond with multiple choice. You know, everybody up here only was able to respond yes or no to whether the NOD had been cured versus, you know, we had people who responded if they, you know, agreed with the council, or disagreed, or if they agreed but thought the project should be revived. And what we saw was that the majority of the people in Lompoc both agreed with the council and their decision, but then we also saw a majority of people who want the Space Center to happen. And I think the wisdom out of the poll comes from, you know, the people who said, who are split between those two groups of yes and no, really. I agree but hope that the project can be revived if new information comes forward. The new information that's needed is funding. You know, the consultant said that, that she supported the concept, felt that the business plan was strong, and with funding, that that would cure the default. So my request at this time is a direct question to our members of the City Council. Is one of you willing to, you know, direct our Director of Economic Development, you know, to reach out to, to Ava Blaisdale about entering a new agreement, what those terms might be in regard to what funding would be required, you know, to show that we can propel the project forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may.
Is it possible to get an answer to that question? Because, yeah, I think that as a citizen, am I allowed to, to ask a direct question and get an answer? It's, it's part of the handbook, I think.
Actually, my response was sort of in that line.
Sure, go ahead.
If the council wants to provide that kind of direction, what you need to do is place it on a future agenda, because it wasn't on the agenda, so you can't take an action. We don't wanna violate the Brown Act. So you could make a motion that you could place it on the agenda to have a discussion to decide whether or not you want to do what was suggested.
There you go. So if, so the answer is if a council member chooses to do so, it'll be placed on the future agenda for discussion. We can't, we can't even discuss among ourselves tonight.
Well, could you motion to put it on the agenda? I, I thought that's what I understood.
If a council member chooses to do that, that's during the, the next, after the council comments, there's council requests and comments.
All right, thank you.
Sue Copeland. First, I wanna smile and say thank you for your service to our city, and thank you for voting last time for scheduling a workshop over the fees and taking the time to, to really look at that at the last session. And I also wanna thank council members Mosby and Starbuck for showing some desire to work with Ava Blaisdale and the California Space Center at the last meeting. What I would like to request is something, what Ben was just saying, is that we have some time to, to really look at the California Space Center. And what I'm proposing is that we put a, together a workshop like the fees workshop that we voted, you voted on having last time, to have community input in the fees. I would like to see a, a community workshop to discuss the California Space Center, so we can get input from all sides, and so that our council can also participate in discussions in an open forum type of thing. So I'm asking that you put together, or not put together, but find a date like we did with the fees, consider having at a date, an agenda item put, so we can have an open workshop to discuss the California Space Center with the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. Jane Bear. I will let you know in advance that I consider Mr. Panoni's letter to be other than an unconditional commitment. It is insufficient, and so I plan to pursue this because I am going to try to save you from the trust you have placed in your city attorney. So let's just be clear about what just happened. You have opened the city up to litigation that you could have prevented, and here's how you could have prevented it. You could have prevented it by promising two things to the city of Lompoc. You were unwilling to promise that you would only discuss the CSC in open session, and you were unwilling to promise that you would only discuss Brown Act violations in open session. You are taking a stand for protecting closed-session meetings. That, that's what you're doing, even when they violate the spirit, if not the letter of the Brown Act. the Brown Act. You know what you've talked about in those closed meetings, and you know whether or not they were really protecting a bargaining position, whether or not you were talking about settling with a potential litigant. So this is what's happening. This is what the season assist is for. It is to protect you from litigation. But you care more about having closed sessions and trusting your city attorney than you do about opening up the city to litigation, and so this is what's going to happen. And it's because I like the city of Lompoc, and I want you guys to do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment and bring back to the council. I'd just like to make one comment real quick. We've had two requests tonight to bring back the California Space Center for discussion, and to bring back the swap meet. You know, the swap meet, if everyone recalls, was not canceled, it's just we did not renew the lease with the organization. The California Space Center, it was not canceled. We deemed that the response to the letter of notice of default was not sufficient. Both these organizations, or anyone else with any other project, is able, and if you're able to, we're willing to accept any recommendations that you want to come forward with. If someone from the swap meet wants to come forward with a proposal, bring it forward to the city. If someone that wants to, the same California Space Center, or someone else that wants to bring a project forward, bring it forward, we're willing to discuss it. These are both, well, the California Space Center, for sure, is a project that we've mentioned before, we'd love to have it. The idea of the California Space Center, if it were ever to be developed, it would be, there's no doubt in anyone's mind, it would be a great thing for the city of Lompoc. So if someone wants to bring that project forward again, the city will be here to listen to you. Okay, starting with Councilmember Mosby. Council requests, comments, meeting reports?
Come, I have card. No, I have nothing to report.
I have no reports.
Councilmember Vega?
No reports.
Councilmember Hamdol?
I have no reports, but I will agree with what you just got to saying. Each one of those organizations can come forward with the right figures and the right things put laid out, come before the council, and we can go ahead and set up meetings, but till they bring it forward, you can't change. Look at zoning and such, and the relationship to the swap meet, where it can go and such, but you had to bring it forward, we can't find it for you. And then also the same thing on the Space Center.
Okay, I've attended several meetings, none at city expense, so I don't have to report out on those, I was on my own. I do want to notify the public out there in TV land, the audience here, this Friday, we have our annual, I don't know the whole name, it's a Christmas, do you know the whole name? Christmas Children's?
Children's Christmas Parade.
Children's Christmas Parade.
And I'm wearing my tie.
Well, he's already got a nice tie on, okay. Christmas season, Children's Christmas Season Parade, yes, thank you. That is this Friday evening, I believe it starts at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM. Down at the corner of, it starts at Pine and H Street. So please get out there, dress warm, it will probably be a little bit chilly, but we'd love to see you all out there. And that concludes my report. We are adjourned to the Lompoc City Council meeting of December 15th at 6:30 PM. Thank you for attending.